And Finance Committee. We will now turn over the floor, turn it over, I'm sorry. We will now turn the floor over to Dr. Battle for us to, for her to give us a presentation on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Nabah McKenney. Again, appreciate having a few minutes during this budget finance meeting just to kind of review and recap where we are with our proposed FY26 budget. Just like months prior, all of our conversations, of course, were grounding in the tremendous growth and success of national public schools. I'm extremely proud of the academic progress that we've been able to make. We know that we also adopt a continuous improvement mindset. Know where you are, but don't stay there. And so what we're hoping our proposed FY26 budget does is helps us to sustain the growth and the achievements that we've realized over the last few years and to continue to move the needle forward in a positive way. So just to recap, tremendous improvement around our growth scores three years in a row, academic achievement for our students across every grade level, every content area, which we know is very difficult to achieve as well, historic graduation rate, and lots of other accolades and celebrations on behalf of the district. So as we thought about that throughout this operating year, we had an opportunity to work closely with the school board to adopt our FY26 budget priorities. So on the left side of the screen, this is all just a reminder of information. We had our three budget priorities from last school year for FY25. And this year we have four adopted budget priorities, again, in no specific order, no rank order per se, but continuity of operations, continuing strategic investments. Those are our investments from our ESSER to our operating budget, strategic employee compensation, as well as comprehensive safety and security planning. And so after those budget priorities were adopted by the board, my team and I went back and began to build out our proposed budget that was prior to the mayor's state metro address. And since then, we've gone back to align the actual investment number to those budget priorities. So I just want to recap again, those FY25, 26 budget priorities. Of course, we're always kind of starting with our FY25 operating budget and the priority investments that were included during that budget cycle. Under the first category, these align to the strategic priorities of the board. We have our continuity of operations budget. At a high level, what you will see inside of that budget, I'll turn it over to Chief Robles here in a few moments. You'll see the inflationary and contractual rate increases that are part of every budget, just simply how much it costs us to operate at the same level next year that we're operating this year. You will see exceptional education, English learner student supports. We've seen an increased need and the unique learning needs of our students across our district. You also see textbook adoption. It has been our priority as administration and as a school board to fully adopt our high quality instructional materials. And then step increases. As a reminder, we shifted the way in which we budgeted for step increases a few years back, which we're extremely proud of. That has been very instrumental to us, particularly as we're retaining and recruiting high quality educators, including the step increases as a part of our continuity of operations budget. After that, you'll see our ESSER bridge in our operating budget. As a reminder, a few years ago, as we were navigating the pandemic, just like our colleagues all across the country, we went through three rounds of nonrecurring ESSER funds. Collectively, we realized over around $423 million if I've got my numbers, if my math is math incorrectly today. So we have leveraged the majority of those funds in nonrecurring ways. We've shaved that down to about 77, which you'll see here is $66 million in our budget requests based upon some return on investment where we're seeing acceleration. And part of that goal was to respond to the distractions caused by the pandemic. But of course, once you do that, you want to continue those efforts as we move forward. You'll see here some of the key investments around our college and career readiness supports, our university MMPS model. Again, as you think about having the highest graduation rate on, in our recorded history, this shows up through those strategic investments there. The mental health and SEO supports, this was probably the priority that we received feedback from, from all of our stakeholders and responding to those needs of our young people and our staff. Our community achieved portfolio falls within that budget. Our scholars portfolio, which is our promising scholars, which we're going to talk a little bit more about in our board meeting, which kicks off on Thursday. Our accelerating scholars, which is our high doses tutoring program and our enriching scholars, which is our weekend enrichment opportunities for our students. It also includes our safety ambassadors in this kind of heightened world right now with the needs around safety and security. We've been talking a lot about our comprehensive layer supports with safety and security measures. And safety ambassadors are part of our safety portfolio in our elementary schools. Then there's our SBB, our school determined needs. We're proposing to continue to support our schools based upon the unique needs of their school community. The next category is strategic employee compensation. This includes our salary step increases for our overall vision is around salary step increases. Step increases budget wise are part of continuity of operations. It does include our COLA for our MMPS employees, as well as a certificated and support pension and certificate and support health insurance. So they fall into a couple of different buckets, but the priority itself, funding wise, the priority itself falls under strategic employee compensation. And then lastly, we have our safety and security priority, which again is additional safety and security measures. In this particular case, for this proposed budget, it will highlight our high school strategies. And then, as we've been doing the last few years, we've also included some aspirational budget items. The items that I have highlighted here in FY25, 26 budget priorities, these are all strategies that are a part of our organization right now, how we operate as, as a school district. Aspirational investments are above and beyond that, that are not represented in our current proposed budget. You can see everything from how much it costs per 1% COLA as an aspirational budget item through our early learning centers to go together with MMPS, our vision performing arts, our SCIF programs, which are students who've experienced interruption in their educational experience, our student success centers, our college and career readiness and advanced academics. That is getting closer to our ideal space that does not include the strategies, the systems and structures we already have in play within the district. We are seeing a need to continue to increase our exceptional education supports. Again, what you've seen on previous slides are the things we're already doing. Our school health clinics, facilities preventive maintenance. We're seeing this show up a lot when we talk about deferred maintenance costs and really trying to get ahead of that. And then in future, beginning to reduce our school to classroom associates ratio because we've seen such great success with that transformation across our, our school district. So I am going to turn it over now to Chief Robles, who is going to walk us through the next few slides. So really ground us in the outlook, both at the federal, state and local level, as well as the line itemization in our proposed DOGN summary, part of our booklet. And because you've all heard, we talk a lot about lots of tensions that are showing up as we're proposing, pulling together this proposed budget this year because there are just so many moving pieces, some of which we just don't have all the information yet because it's not been provided to us. So Chief Robles, I'm going to turn it over to you and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Battle and more members. Pleasure to be here today. And as Dr. Battle mentioned, obviously, the proposal has been built around the priorities that you have set out. But the revenue aspect is also an important consideration as we have built the proposed budget to meet the allocation that was placed on the ordinance. And I think it's important to level set on some of the things that we see that are part of what we need to consider going forward. On the local revenue side, there's some good aspects of it, which is we, you know, the city has a solid fund balance. You know, the, the recent four-year property tax reappraisal is bringing some welcome revenue. And at the same time, there is the uncertainty on the current and emerging economic and political dynamics that are happening, which could impact the local economy, which could impact the revenue that the city collects over the year and therefore potentially impact our revenue for next year, as well as in potential inflationary increases that makes what we purchase more costly due to tariffs and other measures that are, that have and could take place in the future. At the state level, specific to education, we talked about this in the past, the new legislation that was passed around vouchers that could have an impact that is beyond what we have estimated could happen. And that would obviously have in a decrease on the overall revenue that we receive through TISA. There are potential revenue reductions due to the approval of additional state charter schools. We've accounted for some of that, but those, those are dynamics where the enrollment can grow and that could have an impact to us. And as we've discussed in this forum before, the fiscal capacity factor, which determine the split between how much is funded from the state versus locally will be higher. And we're right now estimating that that could have an impact as high as $10 million. We still have two cycles from TISA to determine what's their final allocation for next year. So this is a to be determined space as well, but something that we will continue to monitor. And as at the federal level, there are risks around getting some of the federal programs and grants that we rely on to be reduced or potentially cut, which we'll continue to monitor. The ESSER liquidation extension, which is sort of the extended period to spend some of the ESSER III funds. We've gone through all the process submitted to the state. The state has submitted it to USDAOE, but that, that reimbursement has not been yet confirmed. You know, from the letter in March that was received where all reimbursements were stopped. And the House bill that was passed just now has $5 million for a federal school choice program, which could also have an impact depending on what happens at the Senate. So there's a lot of uncertainty and variability at the federal level that we need to continue to monitor that could impact future revenue for us as a district. And it's part of the consideration as we look at how do we establish the budget. And as Dr. Battle referenced, we are celebrating really historic progress that our educators have helped achieve, our kids with their talents have been, have accomplished. And investment on continuing those, that work is critical. And that's what drives the proposal. And we're grateful that the mayor's proposed budget, it is the most significant investment that we've seen in education in the recent years with a 13% increase. And that investment is going to continue to help us invest in our educators, our staff, continue to strengthen and, you know, the academic supports through the investments that are so critical that have yielded a result. In this increase, there's also a budget sustainability fund that Metro has established. And we're looking to continue to provide the resources that every student needs to thrive, which has gotten us this far on the results, and we look to continue to do that. Investment on the programs that have been proven to be successful. Make sure that at the schools, they have the student-based supports that they're needed, while continue to invest in our team members and educators by increasing compensation, which we'll, we'll discuss. Also, Mayor O'Connell's budget includes a $15 million to maintain a nurse in every school, which is great that we can continue to do that program. And the investment to continue to increase the, the school resource office, officers at our schools and gradually continue to grow that program. So getting now into the summary of what the proposed budget, adjusting it to the allocation that was on the mayor's ordinance. What you see here is at the top, there is an employee compensation set of investments that amount to almost $45 million. And that includes, as Dr. Battle referenced, the $9 million. So actually 9.6 million, 9.8 million, 9.6 million dollars, sorry, of the salary step increases. That's part of our continuity of operation and that's reflected here, as well as our proposed 3% cost of living adjustment for all of our team members, which amounts to $19.2 million investment. There's also investment on, on continuation of the benefits in both health insurance and pension for our employees. That totals about $45 million. And then what you see below are highlighted some of the summary changes that reflect the priorities that Dr. Battle was discussing previously. We have included the funds to make sure that textbooks are funded, are of our operating fund, which is a tremendous win. And that is the $4.6 million that are included there, which is part of the continuity of operations budget that Dr. Battle was highlighting. We also included the safety and security priority, the investment on high schools, safety and secure, additional safety and security measures of $1.2 million. We also have included what is the, an estimate. And this is likely going to change given the new charter law, but our estimate of what the pass-through charters needs to be, given the increase in revenue, which is $13.5 million. And then we have the reflected the investments on continuity of operations around the school-based student supports of $20.4 million, as well as the inflationary contractual increases of $21.4 million that is in addition to the textbooks and the salary step increase. All those are the key items on our continuity of operations. And the ESSER bridge, which is the 6.65.5 million dollars that Dr. Battle was speaking to with all the critical investments on our scholars portfolio, all of the SCL and mental health investments. We are taking a couple of actions to meet our allocation, which one is $21 million in targeted savings. So this is really identifying investments that we can de-prioritize, either, you know, components of programs or contracts that we're not going to expand, that allow us to, to forego those for now, de-prioritize them, as well as budget efficiencies, which is taking advantage of when we have open positions in our system, there are savings that are realized. We've given the example, if a school is allocated five positions at the beginning of the year to provide the support to students and only three of those are hired by the time school starts and the other two, you know, we're able to hire them towards the end of the year. The, the two positions that remain open for that period of time represents funds that we can repurpose. And we would do that actively monitoring. Obviously, we're not reducing any positions that are allocated to school. And I want to make sure that, that we're clear on that point. So there is no reduction on positions. This is really actively managing in the short term and medium term, funds that become available to open positions. And if we are successful at our goal of actually filling every single position that we have at the schools, we will actively move to find areas where we can reduce that are not impacting the schools to actually we're staying on budget. But we would not jeopardize the resources and supports that are at the school level. And that amounts to essentially meeting the allocation of $132 million that is in the mayor's current proposed budget. And I'll pause there and turn it over to Budget Chair Nabah McKenney.
Thank you so much, Chief Robles. Dr. Nabah McKenney will turn it back over to you.
Thank you for the presentation. I will now open it up for questions on the board floor.
Board Member Block. Sorry, I just, I have two questions. One is, Chief Robles, you mentioned a little bit the school level amounts. Can you all talk to us a little bit about the amount we have at the school-based budgeting level? And, and increases there and sort of how that works?
I'm sure I'd be happy to. And Chief Robles, if I missed something, please chime in. So in years past, we've, we've done a kind of higher level breakdown of our budget. The majority of our operational budget is actually through our SBB process. So we try to make sure that our investments are as close to students as possible. What really drives a school's student-based budget is their enrollment and the unique learning needs of the students that they're serving. So there is a base weight for every student. It's similar to what you see in the state formally as well. There's a base weight that is there and there's waitings based upon the unique learning needs of students. Every school has received their projections for next school year. We, we share those back in January or February with our school teams. So they build their budget based upon their projections for, for next school year. So the biggest adjustment, if there were going to be one, on the investments available to school teams to budget is just based upon enrollment. So one of the most significant ones is, has been fifth grade transitioning to elementary schools. So the, our student-based budgeting, the funds follow the student. And so those schools, the elementary schools were funded accordingly. And then the next biggest shift, if there were going to be one, is based upon the makeup of the student population. But we were able to, in accordance with TISA, we did shift our base weight. So every school saw an increase in the base weight for their students and then they're funded based upon the needs of the student population that are being served in the school.
So the amount of money from last year to this year at the school-based budget level per student at the base has gone up? Okay, great. Can you talk to us a little bit about this? The, there were a number of questions at the council and, and I know we've had questions as well about just increases in insurance trust cost, insurance cost. And are there any things we can be doing from the insurance trust perspective or otherwise to try and keep that number closer to zero?
I will, I will let.
It's, I mean, it's a worthwhile conversation. Like for those of y'all who are on the insurance trust, you have these conversations regularly. For those of us who are not and who regularly, one time a year, see a cost that we weren't necessarily anticipating, but that we know needs to be there because we're going to cover cost of insurance for our employees. And that's going to mean sometimes more cost for the employee and sometimes more cost for us and sometimes both. But like, what could we be doing to get that number closer?
Not to, I mean, we didn't mean to laugh at you. But it's just, it's just more of a reaction of we've had those, as you said, we've had those conversations in those insurance trust meeting and so, well, we've been there.
Yeah, and it's similar to your own insurances, you know, personally as well. So I'm going to let Chief Robles respond to this because what we're seeing is a significant increase, both with our certificated employees as well as support and they're managed from different bodies, right? And we're still seeing significant increases with regards to benefits. And then I'll be happy to, unless you want to, Chief Robles, talk about, there's been some years past where, I'll just say it upfront, where the trust did not vote to increase at the rate that we should have, that could have minimized this just a little bit. It wouldn't have gone away because the demands have just been so great. But Chief Robles sits on the trust with a few of our teams. It's made up mostly of our educators who are making, and some three board members who vote and make those decisions. Chief Robles.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Yeah, so to start, I mean, I think for, especially for the, for the public, there, there, our support staff is under the health insurance plan that the Metro government offers. And our certificated staff is under a insurance trust. That means that they're managing independently or separately, I should say. And what you see on increases is reflecting part of that. Overall, cost of health insurance has gone up significantly. So every projection that we've looked at across the country, other places in Metro government estimates as well, looks at a 9% increase next year. So that's part of what is important to recognize is that costs have been increased, have increased significantly. The amount that you see here is the employer contribution to support the premium increase to sustain the plan. And we, as a, as a school district, well, this board essentially supports that we cover the majority of the cost. Like 75% is on the shoulders of the employer versus employee, which is a, you know, alleviates you know, the, the, the costs on, on our employees of any health insurance increase. That's what the, also the amount on the employer portion is significant when you're looking at these contributions. That said, we have been taking a lot of steps to try to figure out how do you reduce the cost of operating the health insurance trust for to be certificated without having to increase the premium. And in the trust right now, the, what the board approved is an increase that helps do two things. Cover what's the projected cost increase in health insurance of 9%, but then also help start building reserves. So as Dr. Battle referenced, because of decisions made in the past, the reserve was utilized to cover some of previous costing, you know, increases on health insurance. And this increase beyond the 9% helps rebuild that so that in future years, you have some flexibility to potentially cover the cost, which is something that the Metro Plan did this year. So they also projected 9%, but they're using some of their reserve to do a 6% increase for, for this year. So that is part of what, what is happening. We are working actively to try to make sure that the impact of the increased cost of health coverage is as reduced as possible within what is in our control. Unfortunately, right now, the cost of health care in general continues to increase. And I think that we need bigger powers to, to also help us in actually making that more affordable overall.
And, and I'll also add for two years in a row, hers have been three. We have three years in a row because of the deficit. The, we've been leveraging other operational funds and ESSER funds to close the gap to not pass on the costs to our employees. And so I just, it's important for us to, to also acknowledge while we've tried to maintain the 75, 25 responsibility, there have been three years in a row, we've essentially not passed that direct cost on to our employees. But we're at a point now where we've got to get to a point of stabilization, including some reserves and just for just full transparency, we've had some internal analysis of this as well as external to determine how we get there. And what we did get back was these are real costs with regards to the needs of our employees, hence while we have this proposed amount for our operating budget at the 75% rate.
And then also to address that, in the past, we have had to cover $8 million that we did not pass on to employees of a deficit before and, I'm going to say, and 10 other. So we've covered 20 million, almost 20 million, $18 million that we did not pass on to the employee for the insurance trust.
About 30.
30 million, okay, 30 million, well, 30, 18 since I've been on it. So that's, that's costs that we absorbed as, as a board that we did not pass on to an employee. So that's a big chunk that, that we have not leveraged and that we've made up for. And then also we have had catastrophic events that we had babies in the queue for a long time. We've had people with, you know, increases of cancer rates have gone up that really have increased the costs that we have not passed on, that we absorbed into the concentration of, of keeping the employee thing. So looking at it, we have made some tough decisions, but this is also the other effect that we absorbed a lot of that money. So would not have to, the premiums increases that we have done, we have done only in the past 12 months. And we have also minimized that impact and absorbed that impact with other funds of up to $30 million over the past several years.
Any other questions? Board Member Block. Then anyone else? Board Member Young?
Thank you. While we're speaking of, of insurance and the insurance trust, I think it got mentioned maybe at the, at the council's hearing, but something, and I am admittedly ignorant of some of the process and discussions that have happened at the, at the trust meetings, but Metro does own a healthcare system. And so I know with the metro general government, they've got a partnership with General Hospital. And so I want to make sure that might be something we explore if the trust hasn't done that already, to work at some cost savings and also benefiting fellow metro enterprises, so to speak. I had a question. On a, on a, on a 1% cost of living increase, I thought the number we were going with was $7.1 million for 1% from a slideshow back in March. But then I noticed it last week at the council hearing, and then in this today, on the aspirational list, it gives 6.4. Is one of those leaving out nutrition, maybe? Is that what that difference is? Or is, which one is the true number?
So it's 6.4. When we did the, and my team, correct me if I'm wrong here, when we did the original calculations, you build it based upon your current employee roster.
Okay.
We have a lot more insight into it now that we've gone through our whole hiring process, which we've seen a little bit of a reduction in the overall percent COLA for certificate and support. But team, tell me if, yes, okay.
Yes, it's, it's running the calculation with the most updated, essentially file of everyone who's there, actual current salary.
Sure.
And that reflected.
Okay, that makes sense. And that's, that's a, that's a swing in the, in the right direction because I think it makes some other tough decisions this board will have to make maybe a little easier. I, I, you know, we talked about some of the uncertainty with maybe federal funding and things like that. And when I first heard what Metro Finance was kind of not suggesting but forcing on all of us with that additional 2% Budget Sustainability Fund, I was a little taken aback, but as I've had time to digest it, I think it makes sense and it helps Metro along with building their reserves to look better for a bond rating as we borrow money to build schools and things. So I think fiscally, we're in a pretty decent spot. And so I do think that, that Chief you and Dr. Battle have done a great job at putting together what you can with what we have. Maybe it's the, not the most poetic way to say it. And so I think now that y'all have kind of done your job of putting together a proposal to us, now I think the board, we need to have some tough conversations and make tough decisions about, is this what we are, are happy with? Or do we want to try and, and do a little better? Meaning, I think the number I got from, I forget the exact date, it might have been May 20th, was the number of teaching vacancies we had, and it was like over 500 vacancies in teaching positions. And that don't include the non-teaching staff. And so at the end of the day, what does everyone want? What do they need? They need money, they need to pay their bills. And I think the only way that we can try and continue to make progress at filling positions is not falling behind on, on what we pay the employees. And I think 3% keeps us on track, but I don't, I don't think it gets us ahead to try and help us out. And so I really, I'm really going to implore this board to really think about, you know, are we ready to have and make some potentially tough decisions to get to a 4% or 5%? I think what I just learned just now makes it a little bit easier. Instead of 7.1, it's 6.4 million. Because when we look at, you know, as I've kind of peeled through, and sorry, I've got different copies of different slides in front of me, but as I've tried to talk to more the, the front-level staff on some of the things we, we're, we're working on, like with college and career readiness supports, that's, that's 6.3 million. And then some of the small, additional small projects and programs, programs at schools, it's 11.0 million. These are coming from what's listed out in the ESSER Bridge and the Operating Fund. You know, are we ready to explore what a cut in those would look like to get us to 4%? I'm ready to explore that. I think if anything, it's good for the public to know and for our staff to know what does that cut look like, how, what are the impacts it has? So that I think everyone can, can make an informed decision on what's more important. And right now, what's important for me is trying to fill our, our teacher shortage and trying to make sure our, our staff can cannot just stay where they're at or fall behind, but can actually try and start to get ahead, which they're actually not going to get ahead because without, you know, beyond our control, the insurance costs, and that's everywhere you go. And so when you factor in the insurance increase, and even at 3%, we're, we're still, we're still not, I think, getting ahead with our staff. And I want to make sure that we really think hard about what our priorities are. And, and I'm not, I'm not discounting what some of these other programs are, and they're all great, but unfortunately, we, there's only, there's only so many pennies in the pot. And that's just, all I ask of this board is, is to really think about, are we ready to, to have some tough conversations about what we can cut to get where I think we should maybe be? And that's what I'll leave it at.
I realize there was not like a question for me to respond to.
Yeah, yeah.
The one thing I, I did want to share, so I think in the teacher vacancies, that's, that's a running kind of total. That is pretty typical this time of year because we have to kind of unemploy about half of those folks because of licensure and certification. So it's really an artificial number. There are likely folks who are, be back with us next school year by law because of how the hiring process works. That's not a real, real, true number. In addition to that, I do want to, just, just for narrative sake, we have realized consistently for the last three years in a row, the lowest vacancy rates that we've had in, in the district. There's always going to be a need, particularly when you have such specialized teacher needs in, in our organization. But we have, I mean, this board has done tremendous work in helping us really dig in to the, the vacancy needs. Where we typically do see them are in specialized areas like exceptional education, English as a second language. Those are probably sometimes rural languages, and there are some state laws that kind of prevent us, kind of tie our hands on having full access in, in that regard. So just, so we know what we're kind of trying to solve for. I just wanted to share that as, as context. I think we got this, we got our teacher vacancies down to below like, was like 1%, 2% last, last school year. So again, significant step in the right direction. I tell our employees all the time, you know, those significant steps matter, but we want to continue to take steps in the right directions to provide all the, you know, compensation and conditions that we know will help our wonderful educators thrive.
And I appreciate that context. And so maybe, and I'm looking back when, when I had asked this, so maybe the better number would be the average monthly vacancy number? Would that be a better picture? That was around, I think, 234. So that kind of a better picture of what we're?
Absolutely. And right now, we have both, well, now that we've been in the school year, we can talk about this different, but at that time, we had both vacancies for '24, '25 and '25, '26 represented.
Together, sure. And that makes sense. And I think, and, and what you say, it, it speaks exactly to, I guess, what I think about when I have, when I have someone in my neighborhood who comes to me and says, hey, I got a letter in April that my student didn't get speech therapy this year because they were, they were supposed to, but they didn't, they couldn't fill the position. And I, and I hear from other, you know, folks in our schools that, and then I think you're right, it is, or I know you're right, it is the more specialized positions, but it's also the non-teaching staff too. And so I appreciate that context, and that makes a lot more sense.
Any other questions? Board Member Young? Okay. Board Member Player?
I'm willing to have those tough discussions. I am skeptical about making the cuts to that for several reasons. One, the economic forecast that we're going into for the next year, God forbid, there is a recession. And also, looking at for the future of, each year I've been on the board, the cost of COLAs increased roughly about $1 million. So that's something that will go into perpetuity, and it makes it tougher to make consistent COLAs into the future because we're also increasing it. We have made steady increases from, or since I've been on board since November 2019, we have always made steady step in COLA increases, even during the pandemic when other school districts did not receive any COLA and actually received reductions in force. We've been consistently given raises when other departments have. I'm willing to have those conversations, people truly understand the consequences of that, and willing to make sure that we as a board are willing to have those questions, have those consequences, be responsible for those in public and to our staff, and also looking at the full picture of, of the quality of workforce life that if we do increase, if we do increase the COLA, that means we're taking away from something else and how that's increase the, the work environment of those employees because we made cuts and then we have to put more on employees because of cuts we chose to make. And making sure employees understand that. In terms of insurance increase, cutting into the pay increase, there's always a misnomer that when you increase insurance, it cuts into the raise. It does, but doesn't overtake the raise. And I want people to understand, we carry the bulk of the 75%, but that 25% increase in the premium does not outweigh the increase of the COLA and the step increases of the employee. Does it chip in? Absolutely. Does it take it over? No. So I also want to make sure we're having the correct context and narrative that when people say, we increased health insurance, it totally wiped away my increase that it comes into but does not, does not chip in all the way completely. So I want, when we have these conversations, I want to make sure that everyone understands the trade-off into doing this and the trade-off that happens in the school system overall going into the next year, and that because of the cost increase overall, makes the tougher decisions down the road. I tend to be more fiscally conservative when it comes to things like this, and I'd rather go slow and steady, but I'm willing to have that conversation. But also want to make sure that employees understand that it's a whole picture because I've had conversations with leadership of thinking, oh, we saved money on this end, so that means I can get a COLA on that end, totally ignoring that there was another deficit on that end. And understanding that, no, just because we save money in one area, that's going to cover the deficit, not getting into the amount of the COLA. And so to understand that everything, that it's, it's a universal total approach, that's a balloon. If you pop into, you know, you press in one end, another end's going to pop out. And so I just want to make sure that when we have that conversation, that it's thoughtful, that it's, it's in a complete picture of everything that we have to manage and that we have absorbed a lot, but also goes to the quality of life that we have in the classroom that understand that if we do make those tough decisions, that there is, you know, in Murphy's Law, there's an equal and opposite reaction. And that people understand that are coming back, well, because we made this decision, this cut, then we're getting the consequences for that. I'm willing to have that decision, I'm willing to make that decision, but also that the employees know for sure what they're also, ooh, excuse me, that was disgusting, sorry. That the employees know what the result of that was. Now I'm going to talk and have a drink of water.
Any other? Board Member O'Rock?
Thank you. In the spirit of being asked to look for what we would potentially possibly consider cutting in this very generic conversation, it sounds like you would like us to see what we think we could find for 1% or 2% additional COLA. The largest bucket items is probably where you would have to go to. And so for that reason, I just want to make sure that we understand what some of these things are so we can have this conversation to our best ability, whether it's today or at a future meeting. So can you, Dr. Battle, explain to us again, what are this, because it's the largest bucket item, what are student, oh, sorry. Because I think that's what she mentioned, was the student success centers and? College and career readiness, college and career readiness, sorry.
Yeah, threw out thing.
That's what she threw out, excuse me. Sorry, my glasses, I'm having to take them on and off, and I apologize for getting older. Okay, so it was, the suggestion was? The?
Oh, she's looking at today's.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what was the suggestion then?
There was like college and career readiness support slash university M N P S.
Yes.
6.3 million. And then we have 11 million for additional small projects and programs. And those were, that would be on slide 11, if you have the March 25th overview, where it kind of breaks down what is in ESSER Bridge, is what it's doing. It's breaking down that, those numbers.
Dr. Battle, will you please explain those two things instead of the suggestion?
Absolutely will. I will preface this by, I am not suggesting that we make cuts in this space because I'm going to turn it over to Chief Chan in a moment, and you're going to hear specifically some data points that are associated with our college and career readiness strategy, including the improved ACT scores that we've seen, the number of students who are qualifying for and leveraging university M N P S scholarships. You're going to hear our K-12 ACT support, just the counseling and advising, so all the things we were talking about, historic graduation rate. Again, so I'm going to preface this with this because these are all strategies and investments that have helped yield the results that we've been seeing. So Chief Chan, if you want to share a little bit more around our CCR strategy?
Absolutely, excuse me, absolutely. Yep, good afternoon, board. I am happy to share a little bit of context on exactly what does fall into those dollar lines. Those departments both do report up to me. So just to, I've just pulled up the budget in front of me, so I have it in front of me. Again, all of these are initiatives that are designed to support our schools and drive the work that we are doing to improve our ready graduate rate and our ready graduate rate overall. So some of the big bodies of work that fall under this are our ACT supports and our pre-ACT programs, so making sure that all of our students get access to ACT preparation, our work-based learning programs, the salaries that we use to pay for our work-based learning students and the infrastructure that supports that and makes that possible. All of the funding that goes into our early post-secondary readiness opportunities or EPSOs, so as you, I'm sure you all know, in order to be a ready graduate, one of the ways that our students can become a ready graduate is by taking four of those early post-secondary opportunities, so that's AP, IB, dual enrollment, dual credit, et cetera. What's customary in the state of Tennessee is to actually pass on the cost of those programs along to students. So if you need to buy textbooks for those classes, if you need to pay for this test, all of that, all of those types of things, customarily, districts pass those costs on to students. At M N P S, we cover all of those costs centrally. It's actually one of the largest buckets of costs that falls into this category is us paying for those tests and those programs. All the infrastructure around our advanced, I already said that. And then as well as that, it's also would include things like the continuity of some of those key programs that fall under gear up, so funding college visits and those sorts of activities that support our students thinking about and preparing for college. I'm happy to go into any detail more about this, but that just gives you a general overview of what's in that bucket.
Yes, and just for clarity, so we have to have that in order to land at the amount that's in their ESSER budget. So we've been tracking every dollar that is associated with our CCR strategy by way of getting to the proposed budget that we have this afternoon.
It sounds like I will need to review from the past, meaning what you're referring to, because I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. But I think it's a fine conversation to have. Admittedly, looking at it quickly, I don't know where we would find it. But it's still an exercise that I hear that you're asking us to take. But it's a very serious exercise for us to take apart it. Keep in mind that whenever we discuss these types of things, it potentially causes concern and panic or fear within our staff. So I want to be clear that we have, of course, no desire of any type of reducement of positions. That should not be a desire per se, but I can see how employees will be concerned about this just because it's a possible cut conversation, and it's not one that they're used to, particularly from the past several years. So I want to just kind of put some ease on that conversation, but I will have to go back and look so I'm more educated of what you're asking us to do, and I apologize for not having it directly in front of me.
Board Member Tyler?
Yes, one of the other, well, first Chair Player, you mentioned how some you mentioned how sometimes there can be a narrative that my increased health insurance cost cut into my cost of living completely takes it away. Do we know the burden that will be directly on our teachers' paychecks? Is it going up for them this year, 9%? Or is that what we are taking on only?
The proposal is a stepping for certificated staff, a step increase, right now the proposal is a 3% COLA as well as a $2,000 bonus that our certificated staff will receive, which on average will be about a 5% to 6% increase for certificated staff, which is different from when you're talking about 25% of your insurance premium going up. I think that's what Chief Player is, excuse me, Chief Player.
Chief.
Board Chair Player is referring to.
Chief, yeah. No, okay. I under, I understand that. So I'm asking the kind of nuts and bolts question of, we see that we are going to increase ours beyond the 9%, our share for the insurance trust. What our average employee that is on the certificated plan, will their portion also increase? Will they also see more money coming out of their?
And because of the cycle, it already, it already has, has. And so of the percentage premium increase, they'll see 25%. We take on 75% of the percentage increase. Jorge or Lisa, do either, you have the exact?
It's about... I'll get to the mic.
Yes.
Microphone, please.
Sorry.
And by, by the way, as Chief Spencer is coming, we send this information out well in advance to all employees for budgeting purposes. And we lay it out by single family.
Yeah.
Individual, yeah. There you go.
So the, the range of increase for employees, depending on whether they're single or family, is $16 a month to $38 a month?
Okay, that, that was exactly what I was asking. So $16 to $38 a month will be their insurance, their portion of the insurance increase.
Yes, ma'am. Per pay period, sorry.
Per, okay, so double that, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
For 10 months.
Okay. So our cost of living increase will be more than that per month? Okay. That's, that's one of the things we wanted to make sure we were looking at the actual numbers associated with that.
Yeah, we've already increased the premium. The premium went up till January 1st.
Okay. And then I really appreciated Chief Chen giving us kind of the breakdown of the college and career readiness. I know you mentioned GEAR Up. I know that one has been a federal grant. Are we, I thought we were still using that as grant.
That federal grant did sunset.
Okay.
They are just key, it's not the entire grant coming over to operating budget. These are key strategies that have yielded positive results for our students. So just like everything else, we've evaluated which of those strategies really work and produce strong outcomes for, for our young people. And so it's only those specific strategies that allow us to do that.
Okay. That sounds good. And then the, another large bucket from the older looking at it was the additional small projects and programs. And I know you probably don't have those detailed in front of you, but I would love for us to get an opportunity to see what those small projects and programs are. They end up adding up to about 11 million. And is that our small projects and programs? Since it is outside of the school-based determine, out of the school-based budget, out of the SBB, because that's a separate bucket and 12 million. So I would assume that the additional small projects and programs that you had listed at 11 were things that were in the support hub as opposed to different schools?
No, it's, it's a combination of both. So some examples of those is the additional technology support. Remember, we are now a one-to-one technology school district. That means your infrastructure has to keep up with being one-to-one. So it's that additional technology supported along with all the securities and all the things that are required of us being the one-to-one. It is the research and analysis capabilities, not per se the peer partnership or some of the other contracts we're not pursuing, but additional capabilities there. There's also support for, we're going to celebrate some of this for our extracurricular activities. So we've now transitioned our middle schools to under the state umbrella. Now, this costs money to be able to do this. We've been celebrating our, our elementary schools having soccer teams. You have to have equipment and resources that go along with that. So that's a few examples of other small projects and programs that don't equate to, as a standalone, millions of dollars. But when you add them all up, there is additional funding that is required.
Okay. I thought most of the technology supports for one-to-one were in our... I mean, I know that we have a line item for them always in our operational budget, but most of them I thought were in our capital needs as well.
Uh, no. So there are pretty strict restrictions on what around your restricted technology can be in capital versus your, which should be in your operating budget.
Okay, so the IT line item in our capital needs budget, what does that encompass then?
So you want to, Laura, you want to respond? And Sean, if you want to, if you feel free to approach the podium as well.
Yeah, personal computer devices are in the, in the capital approvals budget as well. So I do not have what your guys are looking at right now to look at the specific program. So I get a look at that, we can get back to you more information about what that is.
Okay.
Laura? And remember, we have two different technology departments. We've got instructional technology and then we've got our infrastructure technology team, so more.
All right. So thank you, Dr. Battle, and thank you, board member. We do have technology for replacement computers for teachers and for staff and for students, spread among a couple of different spots, including capital and operating, as Sean said. We also have lots of other infrastructure items, including our web service and the, as Dr. Battle said, the security measures to protect our, our internet and also to protect our schools that are also web-based. So a lot of those licenses are also involved that can't be paid for in capital, that have to be paid for in operating. So we've got a mix in both, just to, to create that whole service.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's a little bit more, we can, as Sean said, we can give you a lot more detail, but that...
Yeah. No, that helps. That, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. And then... So we, the cost of the 1% COLA increase, I appreciate that board member Young asked the question about the difference in the price for that. Since we had separated out nutritional services COLA as a separate thing, would this 6.4 include nutritional services COLA as well? I know it's not nearly as much, but I just want to make sure that if we're looking at numbers, that we have the accurate one for everybody that we would want to cover.
Yes.
It does. Great. Thank you.
It does, however, it does not include federally funded positions. So we have to be mindful of that because if your federal grants cannot pick it up, then we've got to figure out how to cover that expense. So it is everyone except for those that are covered through federal grants.
Or they are used solely to cover the increase and then you lose all the resources that are available to schools utilizing those, those grants.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks for saying that because I was going to go exactly to that point. It also increases what we already discussed, which is your base for pension, your base for health insurance, so you have to recalculate everything up based on that.
Yeah, and which I, I understand. I also think that it's, as much as we are struggling with all the inflationary issues that are affecting our bottom line and every single bucket that we have, so are all of our staff having to deal with those same exact things. And the issues that, the frustration are nationwide, not just for us and not just for teachers, but for everybody, are that the increases in their paychecks are not matching the increases in everything else. And so I think it's important for us to have a conversation around ensuring that we are looking at every possible bucket, public, a public conversation, not just behind doors and then you present us a nice, neat picture about it, which is helpful, but I think it matters to the people who work for MNPS that they feel like they're participating in it and that they understand the types of tough choices that would have to be made if, if we were to be looking at that percentage or this percentage or something else. And so I think it's, it behooves us to make sure that, one, we're willing to have that conversation in public, two, also that, that we come to an agreement as a board, whatever the majority is, that, that we own that decision because we had the hard discussion, discussions. So, yeah. I, I want to be quick with this comment.
Board member?
Sorry.
Wait, are you finished, board member Tyler? Board member Block?
Just, I, I think this is a good conversation to have. The, the couple of things I would request that we see if we're going to do that is like, if there's a proposal that is different than what is being proposed by the administration, that what the board members come with that make that proposal is, here's what we would change, here's sort of, sort of like this conversation went around the college and career readiness in particular. Here's how it would impact students too. Because it's not just, I mean, certainly staff, a number one, right? We need to have staff in order to do the things we need with our students. But here's how it would impact students, the things students receive. Here's how that, here's how it impacts student outcomes as well. Not just like students wouldn't get this or they would get this, but actually that might result in this kind of change and sort of, you know, something around student outcomes. And that whatever thing we're, we're thinking we would change. So for example, if it's like, well, if we increase salary by X amount, we're going to fill Y amount of slots. I'd want some evidence that that was true as well. So I just, I think it's a good conversation to have, but let's have it, in my mind, rooted in the data and evidence of this change would result in this impact on staff, students, outcomes, et cetera. Fully baked, so we can, and, and so we can all look at it ahead of time, ideally.
I agree.
Board member Taylor?
I had two things that I wanted to say and just to kind of piggyback on board member, or her block. We have this page with the aspirational budget investment opportunities. And I would like to see, you know, areas if we're interested in making cuts, just have it listed out in a similar way, just showing. Because when you see the items that are on that page that we want to make investments in, but we're not able to because there's not enough funding, we already know that basically we've made some cuts in order to do the 3% COLA that, that we're doing. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that the reason why there's not enough money is because we have a state that does not adequately fund our district. And so we're being forced to make very difficult decisions when the deck is stacked against us. All right, and so to use my, my spades analogy, I, I look at Dr. Battle and what her team is doing and they're coming up with books when they shouldn't get any. And we got the state as a dealer who's looking at the cards in advance and taking out all of the spades, they're taking out all the face cards and then expecting us to still be able to win a hand. And I think Dr. Battle and her team are doing an amazing job playing the cards that we've been dealt. I think for us as board members, all of the folks that are advocating for COLAs and, and all of the other programs that we want to have operated, we have to come together to force our state to provide us the funding that we need to take care of our kids here in Nashville. That's what the real issue is. Us trying to parse out a million dollars here and a million dollars there and cutting this program and that program because these programs aren't just, just dollars on a piece of paper. These are people's jobs. I was a part of that. I was in family and community, I don't even know what the department was called, but it's gone now because we didn't have enough money in the budget to keep our department. And so that represented 15 staff people that were lost because somebody had to make a tough decision in order to keep our budget balanced. While the state is sitting there with a rainy day fund that could take care of all of this. And so I just want us to focus our, our efforts on, in the right area. I think it's important for us to look for efficiencies and ways that we can, can provide an appropriate salary to our staff. The money isn't here in Metro though. The money is at the state level and that's what we want to try and focus our energy on. So that's just my two cents on it. Maybe I need 2 million on it. I don't know. I'm going to have to study at my card games.
Maybe you should have did a hearts analogy. You play hearts or euchre.
I play rook.
I did not. Thank you.
Any other board member? All right, since we are now nine minutes over time, we are going to end this. I want to thank you, Dr. Battle and your team for being available to answer the questions that we had asked on this board. Thank you for the fruitful discussion. Also, thank you, board members, for the, the discussion around the budget and, and what we want to see. I think it is incumbent that, that we reiterate. Dr. Battle, if you could pull up the slides that the board voted on as priorities for our school district? Yes. So I, I just want to make sure that we iterate what our budget priorities are currently and what they have been over the last few years. That is the continuity of operations, continuing our strategic investments. And those are the investments that we are getting a return on outcomes that we are seeing and why we are able to soar as a district currently. Strategic employee compensation has always been a priority. And then our comprehensive safety and security planning. I think this, this budget has done a great job in reflecting those priorities that we can, that we have seen. We have had board members discuss what are some of our challenges that we're facing. Some of those challenges are still unknown to us and we are constantly in flux. And so I want to remind our board as well as our community that there's still a lot about unknowns there and we are doing the best we can with what we have related to this budget. I will challenge board members, if there are areas that, that you feel strongly about seeing those cuts on, as board member Block mentioned, feel free to bring that discussion forward along with what the impact will be, what the impact on outcomes, students and employees will be in bringing those decisions forward. We need to make sure that as we dive into this, we are having robust conversations where all of us are informed on what that looks like as well as informing the community. But until then, we will con-